Katie, can you please start us off the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Badger.
Here.
Mr. Bleefeld.
I'm here.
Mr. Frank.
Here.
Inberg.
Here.
Mrs. Hayman. Ms. Carrie Nikas.
Yeah.
Mr. Stoloff.
Here.
Mrs. Walsh.
Here.
Mr. Antonio.
Here.
Alex Kadea.
Here.
Carly Meltzer.
Here.
Eight present, one absent, and two student board reps tonight.
Thank you. It's time for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. With its stance, one nation, one God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the October 25th, 2021 work session of the Wissahicken School District's Board of Directors. Tonight, we will review action items which we will formally vote on at our next board meeting on Monday, November 1st. I also want to note that the board met in executive session earlier this evening to discuss collective bargaining matters. Item two on our agenda is the list of meetings since late September, while item three is a list of upcoming meetings through the end of November. That takes us to presentations, and we have one tonight. It's a monthly update from our student board reps, Carly and Alex.
I can start us off. So I know we talked a little bit about Spirit Week in my last meeting, which I guess was not last, but the one before that. But just to recap, we had a really great Spirit Week leading up to the homecoming that was on a homecoming game that was on October 8th. And I also thought it was super important to give a proper shout out to the homecoming court. So the people who ran for homecoming king and queen, just for their enthusiasm and spirit. They definitely kept us entertained at the pep rally and homecoming game with their dance moves and thoughtful interview responses. So I wanted to recognize them quickly. And also seniors can now order their graduation cap, gown, and tassel. It's crazy to think that they can already start doing that because graduation seems far away, but it's coming up closer sooner than we think. And those orders are due by November 5th. And it is also important to remind students and families of the support services at Wissahicken. Math and writing labs, ELT after-school tutoring, Stars tutoring, and office hours give students the opportunity to get help in a variety of subjects. I know I love these support systems. I use them all the time. I'm constantly going to the math lab for help. And I just thought that with the marking period coming to an end, we have three more marking periods ahead. And it's really important to remind everyone that Wissahicken is providing the support. And since they are giving us these resources, it's really important to use them. And it's just also crazy that this marking period is coming to an end, and it's gone by so fast. And I'm looking forward to see what marking period two and the rest of the school year is going to bring.
Yeah, I'll answer some more highlights that just recently happened. Two WHS students received.
Alex, sorry to interrupt. Your audio is really soft. Is there a way you can turn up the volume?
Is it better now?
Tiny bit.
Okay.
Sucking horn.
Um, is it better? If I talk like this, is it better?
A little bit.
Okay, we'll try the best then. Two WHS students received the HHA Scholarship Award. This was Aranaya Pendigross and Navia Lazzardi. And they had their whole tuition and textbook charges for the Montgomery County Community College fully paid for, so special shout out to them. Also, just recently, the girls' field hockey team and the girls' soccer team finished first place in their division. So that's a huge accomplishment for the high school.
Alex, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments for either Carly or Alex?
I had, I had a question. Did I just see something? Did somebody just make it to States, one of the girls' teams? I know I saw.
Water polo.
Water polo, yes.
Water polo team did just make it to States, which is, I think they're competing again the 30th, maybe before then too. But yes, States is a big deal, so it's another notable mention.
Just wants to give a shout out there.
All right, well, Carly and Alex, thanks. Thanks for the update on what's happening in Wissahicken. I agree with you. It's crazy to think that we're already doing some advanced planning for graduation. But I'm sure it'll be here before we even, before we know it. So enjoy it, savor it while you can. And that takes us to the first public comment period of our agenda, where we'll hear comments on agenda items only. And by agenda items, I mean topics that are listed on tonight's agenda. Comments on other school-related topics not on our agenda should be held until the second public comment period later in the evening. We're going to alternate in-person speakers with speakers on Zoom. And you will have up to three minutes to speak, and a timer on screen will display your remaining time. When you are called to speak, please be sure to state your name, municipality of residence, and topic. Please note that it is the board's practice not to engage in back-and-forth dialogue with speakers. And with that, I don't think we have any registered speakers in person for the first comment period, so Katie, can we check on the Zoom queue if there are any?
There's no one in Zoom.
Okay. Great. And that takes us to the board president report. And for this evening, I have no informational items or action items to report on. So we'll go right to the superintendent report. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Antonio. Uh, two matters related to COVID-19 that are actually going to help us a lot in our continued mitigation efforts. The first is, as you know, we had the survey out for interest in student vaccines for students under 12. And we had over 1,400 yes, we'd be interested responses. Yeah, it's 1,400 yeses. Now, the fact is that some number of these will, by the time we get our clinic rolled around, go find the vaccine elsewhere, which is fine. But we do have two tentative dates. I don't know if they've been officially confirmed, but it'll be November 9th and November 30th. You need, you know, three weeks between. Our concept is to have these, the clinics open 2:30 to 8:00, so it would be after-school hours. And again, I don't know how many the 1,400 will show, but that's going to be a rather large operational logistical challenge. But we're gonna, we're up to it, and we are partnering up with the local pharmacy to, to do this. All the people providing the shots, of course, will be either nurses or pharmacists who are certified to do that. But there will also be a number of volunteers just helping with logistics, lines of paperwork and whatnot. Also, we have in the works a staff vaccine clinic for boosters. Don't know yet what date that will be. We're trying to get that one hopefully on a Friday. Concept is that after you get the booster, you still, many people still have the same side effects. So we would prefer that to be not on a school day because you can't really predict staffing needs if that happens. But we don't have a date for that yet. We do have an interest survey out, and there is, I think, over 400 staff members who express interest. Again, many might get boosted on their own. But in any case, we'll get that date scheduled and publicize as soon as we can. The other COVID-19-related matter is this, this development that will be coming to us soon, known as test to stay, which is also referred to as modified quarantine. Now, that's something that's being developed at the county level. The county office of public health would have to approve this. And then I would say many, if not most, or all districts in Montgomery County would definitely like to pursue it, including us. And what that means is that students who have to quarantine now, that those rules wouldn't change. You still have to quarantine if you're a close contact and you're unvaccinated. However, you can elect to test to stay, which is meaning, and the details aren't entirely firmed up yet, but it would be something like, test every other day, or maybe every day, and at the beginning of the day. And if you test negative, then you go to school like normal. And it's because a lot of studies across the world have shown that students who were, had to quarantine, didn't very often at all test positive. So as long as we can have that assurance test, it's, it's pretty good reason to do that because that would drastically cut back on the number of students we have in quarantine, which is going to be awesome. Now, that's also going to be affected by having all the younger students vaccinated. So between all students vaccinated, and remember, if you're vaccinated as a student, according to their rules, you do not have to quarantine unless you feel symptoms. If you have symptoms, well, then you're sick, so it's not a quarantine matter. That's actually, you have to isolate. So we're going to cut back on quarantine numbers drastically by having all students vaccinated, and also this option for modified quarantine. I'm not sure when exactly it will be approved at the county level. I've been participating in a, like a superintendent task force to get the logistics down. I think they're very, very close to nailing something down permanently. And I'm pretty excited about this, even though we won't have as many students needing to quarantine, this will cut back on those students out even more, more significantly. So I will share out with the community and the board as soon as that gets finalized. I would anticipate start date, I would say mid-November, maybe. But not sure.
Jim, I just want to clarify, because I know the subject of vaccinations can be a little bit controversial. You said, you made the reference to that we will have all students vaccinated. What I believe you meant was that all students will have the opportunity to be vaccinated.
Yes, it's a choice, no requirement, absolutely.
We are not hinting or signaling of any sort of vaccination requirement. That is not the case at all.
No, what, what vaccines are required and what, you know, what ages, that's all covered by the state, the state level. So we will do whatever the state says. I have not heard of any inkling at the state level for this to be a requirement, so.
Right, okay.
I have a question. Since we're talking about COVID, what are we doing right now? Have we relaxed the cleaning that we're doing, or is, are we still doing the cleaning that we were doing last year, or is it different this year? How are we working that?
We are still cleaning surfaces more often than we would in a, in a quote-unquote "normal" school year. I'm not really sure what a normal school year is anymore. We are not, or given what we know about the science of how the virus is spread through aerosolized droplets, it's, it's not as much of an issue across, I guess, the world, or at least our country, to, to clean touch surfaces. We still do it, and we do it more than we normally would, but it's really much more about what's in the air.
So we're not doing it as much as we were last year when?
When we first opened up last year, it was a bit of an army every day going through this school. And so we are not doing that now. We do have extra staff during the day, but not as many as last year.
Okay. Are they cleaning at night, every night?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jim, I have a question also related to COVID. Are we still encouraging our teachers, even though it's getting cooler, to still take the students outside for classes? Do they have some mask breaks?
Yes.
And how are we doing that? How are we encouraging them? Because I have worked with some parents that they've had teachers that aren't doing it as much as they would have liked. So what are we suggesting to our teachers?
Well, we're not requiring it. We are, we are pointing out that as many opportunities as you can to get outside, the better. Some, to your point, some teachers have a, a style that lends itself to that, while others are, you know, not quite the same. If anybody has an objection to how often or their lack of often and frequently their student is getting outside, absolutely just talk it over with the teacher, see if there's any way they can do. If they don't get the answer they want, of course, the next step is the principal. Share the specifics. You have to be specific or have to say Mrs. Smith's class, I feel, is not getting outside enough. Because for us to chastise the old school when Mr. Jones takes his class out often is not fair to him or his students.
And that's what I have been telling parents, to talk through with the teacher, and then if necessary, approach the principal if there is an issue. But I just want to make sure we are still encouraging that, so that we're being cooler out. Okay, thank you.
Jim, just a couple of questions regarding the response rate on the survey. Do you have a number of what the percentage is who responded to the survey? And number two, of, of everybody who would be eligible, what is the percentage? You mentioned 1,400. What percentage does that encompass within the total amount who would be eligible?
So that survey was sent to families of all K-6 graders. And the reason I would have a hard time answering is we did not require response if you, if you didn't want it. If you, if you already had it somewhere, or if you were not interested in it, we didn't say, please answer no. So I don't know about response rate necessarily. We could divide 1,400 over the total K-6 population, but that really wouldn't get to rate because there's a number of people who would answer no if we were to acquire it. 1,400 students in grades K to 6, a little math in that, but percentage-wise, it's going to be pretty high.
I believe we have about 2,400 kids K through 6.
Yep, that's correct. Again, some, some might not want it at all. Some might run to their pharmacy, the very first available option. So I don't think we can conclude anything from 1,400, other than it's a pretty big number in, in absolute terms.
Other questions or comments for Jim? Well, Jim, thanks for that update. Sounds like some good developments happening. I'm also intrigued about the whole test-to-state protocol. I think that'll be good to have that kind of nailed down and formalized because that'll help, again, like you said, reduce the number and kids in quarantine or isolation. And if they are, then potentially the number of days that they have to do so. All right, so moving on to the assistant superintendent report, let's go to Munyewee.
Good evening. Thank you. I have two informational items, both of which have a brief presentation. So I'll start with sharing with you the ways in which our schools have honored Hispanic Heritage Month, which is from September 15th to October 15th. It's a wonderful time to give special recognition to many contributions with roots in Hispanic and Latinx heritage. So we'll just go through our schools. Blue Bell Elementary, in some of our Blue Bell classrooms, they spent time exploring Hispanic artists, listening to Hispanic, Spanish music, children's books that featured Hispanic authors and Hispanic characters. Some of the students shared their personal family traditions as well that were related to their cultures. And they gave a whole list of books that they enjoyed in their, in their school, including one that I'll highlight, Sonia Sotomayor, A Judge Grows in the Bronx. Lower Gwinnett Elementary School, they pulled again lots of books. You'll notice the theme throughout this presentation. They pulled many books that displayed and displayed the literature to feature Hispanic people and books about Hispanic cultures. So there's a picture there of what the librarian pulled. Each week during morning announcements, an influential Hispanic American was featured with information about the person's life and contributions to the United States. And there were just a few of those individuals along the side there. At the classroom level, teachers use many different resources and a variety of activities to engage students, including research projects for our older students. At Shady Grove, Shady Grove featured projects, displays, and library materials. Again, the image on the left is one of the culminating projects from one of their, from their fifth-grade classes. And the image on the right is featuring influential Hispanic people from 19 different countries. And that's displayed in the hallway. You can see one of the teachers there having, engaging the students. Lastly, their school library featured texts, again, written by Hispanic authors and stories that featured Hispanic characters in both fiction and nonfiction. Stony Creek, fourth and fifth graders did research projects and presentations. You see them there, their projector. Second graders learned Spanish greetings, and third graders learned Taino, petroglyph necklaces they created to honor indigenous people of Puerto Rico. At the middle school, I received a list of many, many activities across various content areas, so they are listed there. But in the visuals, you'll see that the, the top two images shows the middle school atrium display case with banners of influential Hispanic people in history and present day. And the bottom is an image of an activity where students learned about Mexican folk art. There were lots of different activities throughout all of these departments that are listed on this, on the slide here. And at the high school level, students in the high school casa club that's celebrating all students' achievements, they had a festive celebration for Hispanic Heritage Month, including student presentations on the contributions of Hispanic and Latinx Americans, as well as food and a pinata. Trojan Times covered the casa event, recognizing the kickoff of National Hispanic Heritage Month. And it was also discussed across many classes, including journalism. The social studies department explored activities in history across all of the grades, including virtual tours and videos, as well as rich discussions to evaluate historical perspectives and current issues regarding Hispanic and Latinx people. Of course, the ELA department explored the impact of the growing Latinx population in the United States. Project Lit selected the text, "I Am Not Your Perfect Mexican Daughter", as their first book of the year in recognition of National Hispanic Heritage Month. I have the book. It is a great pick. So if you're looking for a book, there you go. Finally, there were some highlights on social media for WIS bedtime stories. Here's two. The one on the left is Ms. Clazaya Latour, our district's first director of equity and cultural responsiveness. She was a special guest reader. And the one on the right shows a story that we reposted from an earlier recording from 2019 in honor of National Hispanic Heritage Month, where Shady Grove's school counselor, Ms. Triford, read with a student, Mindy. So thank you for that. Any questions on that presentation? I'll transition to the next.
Anyway, that all sounds great. I was just curious. The month is from like the 15th of September to October 15th. It's kind of, kind of unusual. Just curious.
Yes, it, there is some history as to why that is. I believe in some of the Hispanic countries, September 15th is the launching date because of the independence. And I don't want to speak at length about it because that's not a part of our presentation. I don't want to show my limited knowledge of it. But we did do some research around that, and I know that the conversation in the classrooms included why those dates specifically. And I recall learning, as I visited classrooms, that the 15th of September is significant in many, many, many of the countries.
Great, thanks.
Thank you for your question. All right, I'll transition now to my next presentation, my next informational item. The board asked for me to bring this topic as a point of discussion for the board for this evening. So I have here some information about how we're providing support to students in quarantine. And then, of course, I'm, I'm happy for questions and ideas and suggestions as we move forward. So we'll take a look first at our data. This is the snapshot data you may be familiar with. And it's showing across October 1st, 8th, 15th, and 22nd, so those are the snapshot dates. I pulled out the data for students specifically. Snapshot data typically has students column and staff column. But of course, we're focusing on supporting our students when they are quarantined. So I pulled out the student data, and you can see October 1st across those, that we had 70 total students at that time, and as we moved through, the numbers have been around that 22, 23, 24. So we're very pleased to see a significant decrease in the number of students who are out. And of course, that total number includes students who are required to quarantine and students who are required to isolate. And then we know the difference between the two, the students who are required to isolate are, are identified as positive. And so to the extent that they might be engaging in any instruction may be limited because they're not well. And we want students who are not well to, to be resting, so focusing on the students who are quarantining. All right, and we wanted to just highlight the adjustments that were made for our lunch plan. Of course, that helped to significantly reduce the number of students who are required to quarantine. And then coming soon, Dr. Chris Field mentioned the conversation around test to stay and the vac, the vaccinations will be for students who are under 12 years old, they'll be eligible to be vaccinated. And so we anticipate to have this number to continue to reduce in terms of the number of students who will be required to quarantine. And of course, these numbers are K-12 across the district. Okay, so our model includes, as we know, asynchronous assignments and supplemental resources. We ask teachers to focus only on essential content, and of course, to be flexible with deadlines and tests. That's a question that we frequently are asked and by, by families. Are they going to get an extension on any test dates? And the answer is yes. We ask teachers to be flexible and to work with students. And so these are the platforms that are used across K through 12. And then we know that there is conversation about what is available in terms of synchronous support. And so for synchronous support, we have made sure to first and foremost, think about the social, emotional, and mental health needs of our students. This year, we certainly have recognized across K-12 for students and staff that this is an area that we need to provide more attention to. And so one of the first things we thought about, as you know, is what are we providing for our students in terms of their wellness around social and emotional and mental health? And so students, when they are required to quarantine, they still have access to our Alter Escape Mental Health Services, which all students have access to. And, and of course, we have the teacher and counselor check-ins with students. We've talked about that. And those check-ins vary in terms of amount of time. You know, some students require less check-in time. Some students require longer check-in times. That to be between the teacher and the students to decide what that student needs. But we also make sure that teachers and counselors are connecting students with any academic support that they may need help with. And so our next slide will show the synchronous academic supports that are available. And so we're, we have in place, as we've talked about before, opportunities for tutoring for the elementary schools. We're working on partnering with the high school for high school students for providing tutoring for our elementary students. And of course, that'd be virtual while they're out. And then at the middle school level, we have homework club and the Stars tutoring program. And then at the high school, the math lab and writing lab, I know Carly mentioned earlier, that is available for students who are required to quarantine because they can access that virtually as well. Okay. All right, so those are the synchronous opportunities that we currently have in place for our students. And I know there's been lots of rich discussion, questions, so we'll certainly open the floor.
Hi, so I do have one question on that last slide. It says for the elementary schools that we're exploring having the high school students tutors, but what are we doing other than that? Because it didn't, there was nothing.
So we have, as issues have arisen, so, so far, we have, we don't have the high school tutors in place right now. But as students have expressed a need, they've really managed it at the school level with connecting with their teachers and working out whatever their needs are. We would like to provide some systematized way to connect them, and that's why we're working with high school. I actually talked to Dr. Blair, and she's already alerted the, the advisors of some of those clubs of students who, to see if we can make a match. And so as students express need or families reach out to teachers and counselors, we'll connect them with those high school tutors. Thank you.
Dr. One, I'd like to return to the question I've asked the last couple of meetings, which is, can we look into some sort of synchronous look-in for the students who are at home for an extended period of time? From our last conversation, I got the impression we're going to be looking into that. I don't see anything on this presentation. I'd like to know where we are on that. There's a lot of questions that we get about allowing children an opportunity to log into class, not necessarily having an interactive opportunity, but at least if they're home alone, learning, an opportunity to log into the class and watch their teachers, watch their lessons. Can we look into that?
Thank you for that. So we have had some conversations about that, and we have looked into it and having conversations with teachers. And considering what that experience might be like, we have concerns for what the experience would be in terms of the quality of turning on a laptop and just facing it for students who are not in the classroom to see or hear. The quality of that experience would not be very good. Or it would require the teacher to stay right in front of the laptop in order for the students to see and hear. So we, in terms of logistics of it, we, we are finding some challenges unless we want to, you know, further explore that. And we could certainly do that in terms of equipping classrooms with various technologies to be able to do it successfully.
And I think that was my point last time. I'd like to see an exploration, whether we're able to do it or not. I think we at least owe it to those students to explore the possibility, while we know it's not ideal. While we know it's not what we would like to see them do optimally, the opportunity to at least engage, whether the teacher walks around and they could still hear them or, or see them. I think it at least gives them an opportunity to not be home alone without any interaction, however many days they may be. And again, we're in a, we're in a different time now. So even though in years past, we may have said, well, somebody had a, a. So even though in years past, we may have said, well, somebody had a broken bone or pneumonia or other, you know, reasons that kept them out over time. We've seen that over the last year and a half, these things are possible. We can do these things. Why not implement them over the long term? If we can create, while may not be optimal, an opportunity for kids to get at least some interaction with their students in the classroom. So I'd like to see that.
And I would agree, Dr. Juan. As a parent, I think it would be very challenging to have my child at home and learning completely asynchronous. In thinking about just the spring of 2020, how challenging that was, at least we had a teacher on the screen teaching the lesson. Now we're one step removed from that and we don't even have the benefit of having the teacher teach the lesson. Now, I, as a working parent, have to find time to teach my children the lesson. I would really like to see, even if at a minimum for now, we had voice recorders so that the student needed to listen to the material to understand what they needed to do. I doubt it at least be something at a minimum we could do right now. It would be helpful to our students and parents.
Another way to look at it is something is better than nothing, right? So even if it's not optimal, even if it's not going to be the best experience for them, it will be something more than what they would have had. So even if they can, I'm not saying that the teacher should sit there in front of the computer. I don't think anybody is saying that. But if the students are allowed to log in and just listen to what's happening, maybe their focus is on the whiteboard. So whatever's up on the whiteboard, they get to see. And then parents just have to know that this is better than having nothing. At least you can hear the teacher. Sometimes, you know, when you're reading something, you don't get it. But if somebody's explaining it and you're looking at it, then you're like, hmm, all right, that makes sense. I don't know. It's just something, like I said, it's just something is better than nothing.
So I have to interject here. We've sort of gone back and forth on this topic multiple board meetings. And I think Mynae was trying to be polite, but in essence, her and the administration have looked into it. And feasibility is not the issue. What she's trying to say very politely is that they don't recommend doing it because they don't believe it's a good option. And so I think that's essentially what I heard. Again, so they've looked into it and they're telling you that they don't recommend doing it. The second thing is that, Tracy, you said it's better than nothing, but that implies that otherwise they get nothing. But I think what Mynae was trying to demonstrate that they do get something. And...
I'm just talking about synchronous. I'm talking about synchronous learning instead of asynchronous learning. Yes, they're getting asynchronous learning, which is very helpful, right? To be able to read and to know and to keep on track with the rest of your class. But to get just a little bit of, I wouldn't even call it synchronous learning because they're not going back and forth. It's something more than just reading.
I have an idea. What is true, we don't think that this is a viable or we don't think this is a good learning experience and would take away from this classroom. However, what if we pilot it somewhere? Part of the challenge here too is we have twelve students in quarantine. So that would probably be like one in a grade level on average, maybe possibly more in the younger grades across four schools. So we'll find some classroom where a student has to quarantine and we're, or maybe even not, just for the pilot. And we'll take a look at what it would look like, sitting at home, either voice recording and/or video, maybe the smart board, whatever. This will be something the teachers would need to do. They'd need to coordinate. They need to figure out who's in quarantine. They need to turn on their, no, to turn on or not. Is Johnny out because he's isolating or is he out because he's quarantining? We have to figure that out. We can do that. We can just see.
What I would also recommend is that for the dozen, or I think it was like two dozen students that are currently quarantining, twelve, okay, twelve students that are currently quarantining, ask them if they believe this would be helpful and appreciated, right, and get their feedback. I think a lot of us who've been talking about it haven't actually had any kids who've quarantined. So we have a market, a test market that we can get direct feedback from and get their thoughts on it, or even try it with them, right?
We can, you know, we can look into it further. We have had discussions with teachers. We can't figure out a way where we can find it to be viable, to be a good learning tool. We are concerned about the other students in the classroom at the same time, but it's worth a shot as a pilot. I wouldn't want to commit to doing this across the district until we get a sense of if it works well or not.
As far as the question about not being able to hear, a lapel mic might probably be the best bet for so the teacher would not have to be pinned in front of the computer. He could still walk around. It would include, as always, the whatever's on the whiteboard so that the combination of what the teacher is saying. And then, of course, when the teacher, when the classroom breaks up into small groups, that wouldn't apply at all because you can't have the small group experience when the kid is not in the group. But for the larger group experience, that might be a way to try doing.
I think we can pilot something like you're speaking and see how to, see how it is. Again, I don't want to jump into this full scale without really having some sense of whether it works or not.
It's something we can try out this week before our meeting next week, to get an idea of whether or not it would work.
We can try to do that. I do want to also share something that is important for everyone to understand here. That's that this isn't as easy for teachers as it seems. This is definitely not as easy to implement. It seems like it should be, but teachers now have many more things on their plate every day than they normally do. So this would be adding something. We can do it. We can try it. And we will find a teacher volunteer who thinks that, you know, it would be a viable solution. I don't want to commit to any timeframes because we need to have these conversations with teachers. Without their input, we're just adding another thing to their plate now. I think that's a recipe for more failure than if we do it in a measured fashion.
Does someone else have their mic on to the room? No, they're all off. Okay, can you hear me? So I appreciate all this feedback and all the thought and all the rigor. But one thing that I did want to also have a question about is, okay, they were quarantined or in isolation, they're back, now what? What's our catch-up strategy for that child? And how do we kind of get them to where that child needs to be post this experience? It's something that we should also be looking at. So it's not just the moment in time of that child being out, but the moving forward as well. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from Mynae or Jim?
I'd just like to say I do appreciate the opportunity to at least, as you said, pilot this. Instead of coming in and just simply saying, we don't think it's going to work. We don't know how it's going to work. It may not be feasible. Let's look into it first. If it doesn't work, we'll know. But if we at least look into it, we're at a point in technology that we should be able to at least look into this. From that perspective, I appreciate it.
Okay. Anything else, Mynae?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. So we're moving on to the Board Solicitor Report. Jeff?
I have no report.
Okay, great. Board Secretary Report, Wade?
Thank you. There's no informational items. There's three items that we'll present next week for approval. The Facilities Transportation Committee, the Work Session, and the regular Public Board Meeting. They'll present them for the next meeting for approval.
All right. Board Treasurer Report, Wade?
Thank you. There's no informational item and at the next meeting, we'll be presenting the September thirtieth Treasurer's Report, which is the eleven dash one. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Wade on those two items, reports? Okay, Jim, I know that Danielle's not here this evening, so for the Director of Human Resources Report.
We drew straws. Dr. Dewan wins.
Okay. Anyway, back to you.
Thank you. There's one informational item. Document twelve-one A will reflect the SCS Staff Guest Teacher List for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. That's something that is annually presented to the board. Looking at the action items for which we will be seeking approval next week. Item one is, again, a typical annual sort of item where there is a list of resignations, retirements, terminations, appointments, et cetera, as well as appointments for extracurricular items. That's document twelve-one. Item two is, we'll be seeking approval of additions to our volunteer list. Again, this is pretty typical. That's document twelve-two. Item three is approval of a new addition to substitute listing for twenty-one, twenty-two school year. That's document twelve-three. And item four will be secret approval of a teacher assistant on special assignment agreement between the WEA and the Swishtaken School District. That's per document twelve-four. That's a unique situation where we have an instructional aide who's a certified teacher for whom we'll be seeking to assign as a classroom instructor for an interim period. I'm hopeful that you don't have any questions at this time. We do have a blue sheet item. There's a blue sheet item, twelve B five, thank you. That's approval of the SCS Addendum Agreement for a high school hall monitor. That's to support our high school transitions and students as they're moving through the building. So we'll be seeking approval for that. That's item twelve-five. And that's for the remainder of this school year. Any questions that I may or may not be able to answer, but my colleagues here, I'm sure, will be helpful.
I don't know if this is going to work. The blue sheet, a teacher, or I'm not understanding this hall monitor one.
Sure. We have the need for people to be in the halls, not as security guard, but as hall monitors, see who's coming and going. The greatest time for this, needed for this is arrival and dismissal, is eyes on the doors. And rather than have a security guard per se, which has a whole lot of other training requirements, this would just be adults who can monitor things.
Jim, is the purpose for that safety reasons or is there an alternative reason?
Yes, in a broad sense, Paul, it's an awareness of what's happening, maybe eyes and ears in the building. We wouldn't expect these people to do anything should an emergency arise, but they would communicate and we'd have team on the scene quicker than if we didn't have eyes near some parts of the building.
How many hours a day are we on?
I don't know if that's been determined yet. It does need to be arrival and dismissal and it would probably be the same hours as a substitute aide during the middle of the day. Lunch has some egress concern to come and going, so I would say probably seven.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you for that. That takes us to the Communications Committee Report. Zephi?
The first numbers here that we see is on campus, in-person positive COVID cases. The current period, which is October eleventh through the twenty-second, had a total of six. And that's broken down by building. Next slide. The next slide shows off-campus positive cases. And so these were not on campus within the twenty-four hour period. And here we see a total of nine. Same period, October eleventh through the twenty-second. You can see how that's broken out by building. And then the next slide. And Katie turned this because I couldn't remember. So here we're looking at what our counts are for quarantine versus isolation by building. And the orange or the darker color on your left is our current snapshots of what's happening as of October twenty-second. See that we had twenty-seven in total that were either quarantining or isolating. And of those twenty-seven, three were staff members. The remainder was students. That is also broken out by quarantine and isolation by building. And to the right is our October first snapshot. And I'm so happy to see that. There's been a significant difference in our numbers. And as a reminder, October first, we're at seventy-six, which made us all feel a little concerned. But the number is total twenty-seven. So I'll let Katie make the point.
Zephi, my recollection was that I think we had a board meeting around near October first and we were looking at the numbers and they seemed, you know, pretty high. And so I think as a board, we were concerned where the trend was going to go. At the time, Jim, I think you were talking about changing some of the protocols of how we do lunch at the middle school in particular, I believe, and maybe the elementary schools as well, which we were hoping would decrease the numbers of students that would need to quarantine or isolate going forward. And the good news is that we have a dramatically lower number as of the end of last week. How much of that do you attribute just to the lunch thing or what else is going on or might be happening?
Most of those, if you look at those two numbers, the earlier October first one had eighteen students at Blue Bell. And by getting that, just that school alone, lunch period up to six feet, which means that there's many fewer students to quarantine and you can see they're down to zero. I think that's a real testament to that staff, the leadership and the staff of Blue Bell. And then the other schools, middle school has one student currently in quarantine and one student at the high school. Or, yeah, and now, I don't know if that's lunch, not necessarily lunch, but the difference there is the students who choose to be vaccinated don't have to quarantine. So I don't know if there's a statistical difference or, like, lower when it has four next week, it could be two, who knows? But the numbers are appreciably lower than they were and I think that's a large part of the lunch distancing, as much as anything else.
Yeah, I mean, certainly a huge improvement and encouraging to see the numbers the way they are. Zephi, are all these data tables, I think a lot of this information is available on the district's website, right? Katie, is that right?
Yeah, they're all on the COVID-nineteen tab. So, and that's updated. I don't know how often weekly. Positive case counts are updated daily and then the snapshot is updated once a week every Friday.
Right. Yeah, I know there's a lot of people who are interested in overall trends and then data. And I'm glad that we make it easily available in a dashboard for the general public to see as well. So, great. Other questions for Katie or Zephi?
I have no other items. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The Curriculum and Technology Committee Report. I know Rani's absent tonight, so Mynae, are we going back to you again?
Yes, thank you. We have no informational items and six action items for which we will be seeking board approval next week. Item one is receiving the, excuse me, a list of the three hundred fifty-five graduates who received Swishtaken diplomas. So we'll be requesting board approval of that list of graduates for twenty-twenty-one. Item two, we're requesting approval of an agreement with GOMO Educational Services for professional development training in the area of restorative practices for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year and twenty-two, twenty-three school year. At the Racial Equity Oversight Committee meeting last week, our admin team shared some discipline student data, which unfortunately reflected the racial disparities in student discipline that we see across the nation. So we're seeking to take some intentional steps to provide restorative practices training for administrators and staff. And we look forward to working with GOMO Educational Services to facilitate... And we look forward to working with GOMO Educational Services to facilitate this training, which is designed to build staff and administrators' capacity in social and emotional learning habits, fostering reflection, approaching discipline in a different way to help students resolve conflict and resolve harm. In most districts, it's turning into like an informational item. I apologize. But in most districts, student discipline is typically punitive, and the punishment oftentimes pulls students is exclusionary and pulls students away from school. And so we're looking to to make some changes in that regard, not to remove those suspensions completely, but to find alternative ways to discipline students. And so this restorative practices training is going to help benefit all students and increase positive school climate in schools. Just wanted to provide the board with some background on that. Item three, we're requesting acceptance of a layoff donation of $5,000 from Lockheed Martin. Item four, we're requesting ratification of a 2021 ESY contract with Lakeside for a student. Item five, we're requesting approval of an outplace tuition contract again with Lakeside for a secondary student with significant needs requiring mobile support therapy. And item six, we're requesting approval for an increase to the MCIU cost plan for the 21-22 school year. The board previously approved the 21-22 MCIU cost plan in May of 2020 for $182,000-plus. The new service plan would be an additional $159-plus thousand. And this is this increase is due to the services that we are needing to provide for students who are in the WVA program, who require special education services. They receive their related services through that WVA program with the MCIU, as well as to students who are in the virtual autistic support program. And so that's what the increase in cost is. Any questions?
Two comments. First, and then a question. First, I just wanted to congratulate the 355 students that graduated last year. A big round of applause for them. They went through a year that was, you know, very different than any other student other than probably the class of 2020. And then I did have one comment. I just wanted to make sure that we're very clear with the restorative and punitive, that we are not getting rid of punitive for certain infractions that is still there. We don't want the parents to think that, you know, no matter what you do, there will be no punitive punishment there. There will be for certain things, but we're trying to, you know, take it a little differently for some of the other items. And then I had a parent ask me just today. They wanted to know if the SRO, if we were doing away with the SRO. I said, not that I know of, but I would bring it up here tonight. So I just wanted to make sure that is.
Definitely not.
Okay. I thought so, but I just wanted to make sure. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
When you have a question on item six, this actually might be more for Wade. Is that based on what I'm reading and what you said, it's that our the cost for this set of services is about $159,000 higher than we had originally planned for or budgeted. So I guess what I'm wondering is what funds are we using to absorb this unexpected increase?
So thank you. In the special education area, specifically in the budget, there are certain unforeseen items. This would be one of them. Just like if we had a student that needed to be placed mid-year. So there is a certain amount of discretion in the special education budget that is needed every year, and that would be where we would look. In addition, as you are probably also aware, there are certain funds that we potentially will be able to use to keep it out of as an increase essentially. So we'll look there first, but at the end of the day, there will be sufficient budget to allow for this increase.
Great. Thanks. Okay. I've been told that it's hard to hear everyone, or just me in particular. Everyone, okay. So everyone speak louder and closer to your microphone. Any other questions for Wenye Way regarding any of these other items? All right. Thank you. So moving on then to the Facilities and Transportation Committee report. Tracy?
Yes, there are no informational items. There will be one action item, and that is the approval to award the Stony Creek Elementary HVAC unit ventilator replacement project to the lowest bidder, which we have in our attachment, ASL refrigeration for a base bid amount of $703,400 per document 15-1. And that's it.
Okay. Any questions about the action item?
Joe, I don't have a question about the action item, but I did have a follow-up question from our facilities meeting.
Sure.
I just wanted to follow up. I had asked about if we could look into possibly a larger venue for down the road. Have we looked into that? I mean, right now I realize we don't have larger tents at these meetings, but I do foresee possibly in the future, depending on the nature of the meeting, that we may need a larger room. And I certainly want to make sure we keep the Zoom component. So I'm just wondering if we've had an opportunity to look into that.
Zepi or Katie, I guess, do you want to?
We are still exploring this. We're working through right now some of the logistics of it to understand what the capabilities would be. But we're hoping in the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to share some of those insights.
Thanks, Katie.
Yeah, and I think the last I recall is that there was there was an estimate for potentially outfitting the high school audio on or auditorium with some upgraded audiovisual equipment so we could conduct the board meeting there. It would come with a price tag, and I think that's something that, you know, we as a board would have to discuss and decide if we wanted to approve that. And we could do that once those estimates are nailed down, and we could do that at an upcoming meeting.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, so that takes us to the Finance Committee report. David?
Thank you, Joe. Finance Committee has no informational items. We have four action items we'll be asking for approval next week. That includes approval of the financial reports and routine approval of list of payments for the month ending September 30. And there are two approvals of agreement to increase the property assessment. And both of those, well, they result in increased property assessments. That's all.
Questions for David? Okay, we're going to the Policy Committee report. Marshall?
Thank you, Joe. Tonight I have one informational item, and it is a summary of the Policy Committee meeting on October 20. As many people know, we are in a multi-year review of the entire district policy from front end to back end, including every policy that we have. This year, we are starting with the 300 series. And the summary for that includes revision of some of those policies related to employment. That includes revisions relative to the superintendent and assistant superintendent, district staff, co-curricular program staff, employees in summer school, student teachers and interns, assignment and transfer of all employee groups, as well as reduction of staff relative to all employee groups. That encompasses the 300 series. Those are revisions that we will be presenting for review. In addition to that, we also took a look at recommended changes from the PSBA. Those included multiple provisions really related to threat assessment. They're in the 200 and 800 series. They are relative to weapons offenses, a threat assessment team, hazing, bullying, emergency preparedness and response, and as well as the school school security personnel, including the SRO that Tracy brought up. So those were also reviewed for recommended changes. And then we also took a look at recommended revisions, several of them, 006, 06.1, and 903 relative to board meetings, including how they will take place moving forward in both hybrid and virtual, as well as public participation. So we reviewed those for revision as well. And finally, there are a set of recommended for deletion policies simply because those that we are reviewing and revising that I've already laid out, there is no longer a need for those particular provisions. So in order to clean up the system, those will be deleted. So that is a summary of what we went over at the last Policy Committee meeting. And my action item for tonight is that we will be reviewing and seeking approval at the next meeting of 17B1 through 24, which is an approval of the first reading of most of those provisions, as well as the deletion of the provisions I went over as well toward the end. So that is a summary of the Policy Committee report and what we will be seeking next time. Unless anybody has any questions, I have nothing additional to add.
All right, that's quite a handful. So I appreciate you and the committee's work on that, Marshall. Okay, if there are no questions, we're going to move on then to the Racial Equity Oversight Committee report. Paul?
Thank you, Joe. The Racial Equity Oversight Committee met on October 18. We had an excellent meeting. It's very well attended. We had several topics that we covered during the meeting. First of all was discussion of the upcoming topics that the district is recommending that we cover in our in our ongoing committee meetings. We had some input from the committee members as to things additional they may want to see or other items they might want to cover. And we do have a robust list of items that we will have in upcoming meetings. And so that's being formalized as we move forward. We also secondly had a review draft of a board policy that was intended to formalize the committee into a long-term standing committee that will be written into board policy. And so we had a chance to review the draft. As that item is finalized, it will be presented to the board and hopefully in order to get board approval to adopt the policy as a formal ongoing committee. So that will be forthcoming. Thirdly, we had a district update for the administration. We had two main items that were covered during that topic. Number one was plans for a student well-being survey, which is intended to kind of take the pulse of our students within the district, understand how they are feeling in terms of their ability to assimilate into classes, into the district, into our overall community here at Wisconsin Hicken. And as that continues, we intend to get a very good glimpse into how students really feel about their experience. And then from that, we'll be able to have action items to move that forward in order to ensure that our district is warm, welcoming, and encouraging for all in order for them to be able to thrive here within our district. The second part that we discussed under that topic of district updates was the plan to fulfill vacancies that have occurred on the board due to one person's time commitment in their secondary educational roles in college, which is precluding them from being able to continue on the board, and to others who had to actually roll off. One left the district, and the other had other commitments as well. So we talked about the plan to fill those vacancies. And lastly, we got an update on the racial disparities in student discipline that Wenye Way referenced earlier under Communications. The survey is ongoing on behalf of the administration, as she alluded to. But we look forward to getting more details as that moves forward, as well as, again, getting a plan of action to really right some of the course of action that has occurred, not only in our district, but in districts across the country when it comes to discipline and disparities on how students get treated under the current and past systems. Joe, did you have anything else to add still, Jim?
A couple of comments. The educational equity policy, once it goes through some, it's gone through some discussion in this committee, but we expect hopefully to put it into the queue for Marshall, the next policy committee or batch of policies that the policy committee will review, so to go into that cycle upcoming. That's number one. Number two is we spent the majority of time, I think, in that meeting talking about the district's data around student discipline. So this is information on the number of disciplines disciplinary incidents. I mean, students that are cited for some kind of disciplinary reason, as well as then the, I guess, responses or punishments as a result of those incidents. And the data that we saw was glaring. And I guess maybe in some respects, not surprising because it mirrors trends across the entire country of wide disparities of who gets disciplined and who gets what response to the same disciplinary event. The bottom line is that, again, like districts across the country, and our district is just as prevalent. Black and brown students get cited for discipline at disproportionately high rates and tend to receive harsher responses for those incidents than their white and Asian peers. And again, it's seeing it in the hard numbers was, you know, a bit glaring. But I think it's important because that is a call to action for us as a district to figure out how we can improve that. One of the things that Wenye Way mentioned earlier with respect to restorative practices is that that's one piece of the puzzle that we hope over time will improve the disparities in student discipline that we've seen and have been in place for many years here at Wisconsin Hicken. So that's the, I guess, sort of the cornerstone of what we talked about at the last meeting, and more information to come on that as we move forward. Any questions or comments for Paul? Okay.
Sure. Thank you.
That takes us to the report of board representatives, extracurricular. Tracy? Amy, MCIU Board of Directors?
We don't have a meeting now until November 17.
Okay, great. And Ron, anything for the MCIU Legislative Committee?
Yes, there are some of the general, there's a bill being produced now where the, it seems to be a stalking horse for a way of attacking the supposed critical race theory being taught in schools. The idea of all the curriculum being posted online. And it seems to be a way of saying, aha, we got you, even if it doesn't exist. There is also a, so work being done with charter regulations to make them more transparent for two bills, one more effective than the other, but neither really gets to the heart of the problem. And that is how cyber charters, most especially, are getting, are charging the homeschools far more than it's costing them. And that is a fight that goes on and on. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. North Monco Technical Career Center. Ronnie's not here, so David, any anything to report?
Thanks, Joe. The Joint Operating Committee met last Monday. They conducted routine business, and I think the highlight of the evening was acceptance of the audit for last year's fiscal year ended this past June. They got another clean audit, and things are looking good. The fund balances up. They've started a capital reserve project. They've started a capital reserve project there, our fund, and that's all.
Thank you. PSBA, Zepi? Okay. That then takes us to the second public comment period, where we'll hear comments on any school-related topic. Again, we're going to alternate in-person speakers with speakers on Zoom. And you'll have up to three minutes to speak. And we'll have a timer on screen to show your remaining time. When you're called to speak, please be sure to state your name, municipality, residence, and topic. Again, it's the board's practice not to engage in back and forth dialogue with speakers. All right, we had several people who've registered in person and I'll go to the first one. And I have Paula Bladak. Okay, so we'll come back to her. The second one is Maureen Bogut.
There should be ten. Is there anybody get one?
Yes. There's extras over there.
Dr. Chrisfield, you got one? You please, make sure you share. This will be important for you.
All right, you can do that, please.
Thank you. My name is Maureen Bogut with Payne Township. I speak today to some materials in the library. And I apologize for the graphicness of some of the pictures I'm showing you. I want you to look at those packets of them up now because this is a book that I found fully displayed in the high school. And to my horror, there are extremely graphic pictures. If you look at the packet, are any of you looking at the packet? I don't see anybody looking at the packet. Well, I then have to unfortunately talk about what's in the packet. There are graphic descriptions of, and I hate to say this, acts of oral sex, anal sex, masturbation, and extremely graphic descriptions of, of these acts in the book. And this is front and center in our high school. And this is the book Gender Queer. And this is just on display. It's not even in a section that is, you know, off to one area where people have to sign it out, have parent permission. This, this is pornography. I want everybody to look at this, it's right in front of your face. So I called the high school, I was very upset, obviously, like this is, what, what is this? I don't understand what this is. This is not education, this is not literature. It's, it's a graphic novel, I mean, they can't even hardly write a sentence. It's so pathetically written. But anyways, to that knowledge, I spoke to, I emailed our high school and I was initially thinking they would absolutely respond, say, this is horrible. I did explain the nature of what was in these books. I wanted to go through the proper channels, I didn't want to just, you know, make a big deal, but I wanted to go through the proper channels, I spoke to the high school. I expected some response and, and they did respond, but it was, it took some days to finally get back to me saying, well, you have to fill out some paperwork. So there's a protocol to go through for, I guess, school board policy one forty-four. So for parental or citizen complaint. So I did fill out the paperwork and it is in now for review and there's apparently a committee. But what's horrifying to me is that obviously somebody had to review this book to approve it. There are policies, in your own policy, there's different criteria for having these things be in a school library. Well, someone knows this is there, the librarian must know this is there. I don't know how it fits any of the criteria that is listed in your board policy. There's about six of them, I can tell them another time, but this doesn't fit it. I, I come to you today because I don't think we need to wait to have a committee review this. I think I'm asking you as the board to review this, pull it from our shelves. This is unacceptable to any parent that would see this, any parent with normal decency. I want it off the shelves and I'm asking you guys, that's why I come here tonight. Different tenant directly, review this, please. I don't need a committee to tell me this is disgusting material. Thank you.
Katie, do we have any speakers on Zoom?
Two, so first up is Beth Brillinger.
Hello, this is Beth, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thanks. My name is Beth Brillinger and I am a resident in Blue Bell. My comments this evening are about division in our Wissahicken School District community. Social media proliferation brings a type of communication that we'd probably not participate, participate in if we saw each other face to face. Keyboard warrior can be someone who behaves in an inflammatory manner in a discussion forum. Another explanation is that a keyboard warrior is someone who posts angry messages or likes to get into arguments on the internet. Misinformation is defined as false or inaccurate information, especially that which is deliberately intended to deceive. In our community, on unofficial local school district community pages, we have seen an intersection of keyboard warriors and misinformation. This is alarming to me because of the tone that the behavior, behavior sets in our community. Parents and children, including pre-teen and pre-teen students. I've seen very targeted comments toward members of this school board. Just today in regard to this school board meeting, there is a comment directing others and I quote, "If anyone sees a school board director unmasked indoors in a public setting, not following their own directives, please send pictures." These comments and interactions are noticed, noticed, our children notice. Not everyone who reads them will comment. School board directors and candidates should not be subject to harassment. I believe that there is a small group of people in our community who are particularly loud in regard to these negative comments. Perhaps it's time to tone down the divisive remarks and actions. There must be a better way to discuss issues that are important to us, disagree respectfully and offer possible solutions to those issues without anticipated fallout. I support the guidelines to limit attendance to in-person school board meetings, not only because COVID is still in our community and infections continue to occur, but also because of the division in the community. There are organized groups who seek opportunities to record videos of school board meetings with altercations or shouting in order to display division. This is not acceptable. Also, the last two meetings had attendance numbers in the single digits. That doesn't really demand an increase in the number of in-person participants. The online opportunity participate is adequate. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to comment. I leave you with a question to ask ourselves. Are the words that we write something that we would be proud to show our children? Are we, are, are we okay if our children who look up to us use the same tone and words to others? We can all do better. Thanks again.
Thank you. Our next speaker is in person and is Paula Bladak back in the room?
Paula Bladak with Payne Township. I just want to let you know. No, I really can't because of the fact that nobody can hear you on Zoom and I want to make sure I'm heard clearly.
Well, if you work with a mask on, then I want to work this week.
Sure. So I'll just. So first of all, there is technology where the teachers, it's called Owl, it's a thousand dollars. You can buy it where the teachers do not have to sit in front of the computer. So I don't understand, we've been in COVID for a year and a half and our technology department have not been current with all that is going on and other districts have been more current. These meetings, we are all taxpayers. So therefore, these meetings should be expanded to the entire community. It should not be limited, including the seniors. So at this point, your policy one forty-four regarding the books states supplement an interest and enrich the subject matter in the curriculum. Reflect the extracurricular interest of the students. Encourage devotion to and appreciation for before informational and recreational reading. Represent the finest choice available in authority, scope, illustration and format. Represent various points of view on opposing sides of a given or controversial issue. Provide for the range of reading abilities and reading skills of students and encourage and develop good literacy taste. So now I'm going to read to you from a book that Maureen has just put up for you. And for the, everyone that's listening, this is rated X and I did not know the Dewey Decimal System has a porn section. I got a new strap-on harness today. I can't wait to put it on. It will fit my favorite dildo perfectly. You are going to look so hot. I can't wait to have your cock in my mouth. I'm going to give you the blowjob of your life. Holy shit, then I want you inside of me. This is the most turned on I've ever been in my life. I am dying. Why is it these books on the shelf front and centered at the high school? There are also books like this at the middle school. So I suggest you fire the librarian or you research all of this and pull them all off the shelves. Thank you.
Katie, can we go to our next speaker on Zoom, please?
Yes, it's Kara Finn.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Kara Finn, I live in Lower Gwinnett. I have two comments, or sorry, I have comments on two separate topics. COVID safety measures and school library books. First of all, I would like to thank the school board for supporting extensive COVID safety measures, including masking at Wissahicken. There have been two separate instances of a child with COVID in my daughter's classroom that were way too far apart to have been in classroom spread. In both cases, my daughter did not catch COVID. Given that she is in kindergarten and enjoys playing closely with other children, I credit her health to the safety measures in place. I also want to tell you how helpful it's been to my family that you have been notifying entire classrooms of cases and you are, we are a rare school district to do this, even those not considered close contact. My father is immunocompromised and in both instances, we knew to avoid seeing him until we had a negative test done five days after positive, bleh, can't talk, possible exposure. On another topic, I have heard rumors about an effort to remove books from classroom and school libraries. I did not know which books, I wanted to note that before I can continue my comment. First, I would like to know if these rumors are accurate about an organized effort being undertaken in regards to book availability beyond the one being spoken about. If they are, I was going to quote the school board policy from one forty-four, but it was already read. So I'm going to skip quoting it and just skip to what I wanted to note about part of the language that said religious, ethnic and cultural. That doesn't quite encompass all of the groups included in Wissahicken's diversity, equity and inclusion effort. I would like the board to consider amending the language in, in the school board policy one forty-four to be reflective of the DEI effort. While ethnicity is mentioned in the policy, race is not. In addition to other groups I noticed missing from the policy are those with disabilities and members of the LGBTQ plus community. I would also like the school board to consider transparency around the removal of books from classroom and school libraries that were previously considered to qualify under the school board policy. As notifying the school board as to the outcome of a book challenge is part of your policy at minimum, consider adding that information into school board meeting notes. I believe that everyone would be better off with transparency over rumors. Thank you for everything that you do for our school community. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Our next speaker is in person and is Stephen Coleman.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Coleman. I live in Whitpain Township. I have four children in the Wissahicken School District. And I'm here this evening to join my voice in expressing astonishment over material featured in our school libraries. Material that to any reasonable person would be considered nothing short of pornographic. This material is not only made available for our students in our school libraries, but is actually promoted to our students as somehow helpful, edifying and educational. My fourteen-year-old daughter, encouraged to learn more about the LGBTQ experience, read at least part of a book entitled Gender Queer, was mortified, embarrassed and disturbed by the images and content of this book. When she approached the librarian to raise concern over the content of the book, she felt shamed, she was put on the defensive and told that pornography is in the eye of the beholder. My question for the school board is this, is this the position of our school district that pornography is in the eye of the beholder? And if so, is there any line? Is there any line at all that we can expect not to be crossed? Are there any images that we can have confidence our children will not be exposed to in our public schools in the name of education? Is any content off limits for children as young as fourteen years old? I assure you that if a man was standing outside Wissahicken High School handing these images out to our kids, he would be arrested and we'd all be relieved. But apparently this, it's perfectly fine for our librarian to set these books on display for our kids to read and rent. A quick Amazon search offers the following reviews. These are just the first ones that appeared, not specially selected. This is from Care Care, not for most audiences. Purchased it and got a disturbing surprise. It left images I understood but didn't want to see, not recommended, returned quickly for refund. Pen name writes this, pornographic children's book horrific, so disgusting. If you like porn, then this, you'll like this book. Stop sexualizing our teens with your pornography. They're children and children do not need to see these graphic images. Annie, she's to the point, she writes WTF is this? This book should be burned. Next one, Kindle customer, no, stop indoctrination. April writes this, not appropriate for children, parents beware, no stars. Julie, porn for kids, question mark, absolutely disgusting, she says. This book is not appropriate for kids, only a seriously confused person would write such a book. Shopper mom writes this, this is pornography. The images and languages in this book have no place on a bookshelf or anywhere near children, which is the target, target audience for this book. It shows oral sex, homosexual sex, et cetera. Please do not think this is teaching material, it is intended for grooming. Thanks shopper mom, but apparently our librarian at Wissahicken High School knows better. My understanding is that it's a school's job to protect children from harm and to create an environment that's most conducive to their growth and thriving both physically and mentally. Countless studies have shown that exposure to pornography at a young age can do irreparable damage to the development of children's character and future growth and maturity in relationships. All this without even mentioning the clear violation of religious and ethical values that many in our community, including me and my family, hold very dear. I would appreciate a response in writing on the website to these concerns that outline any steps the board is taking to address this issue and steps you are taking to safeguard our children's consciences. Thank you.
Katie, do we have any other speakers on Zoom?
We have one more, oh, my hand dropped. There's no more speakers on Zoom.
Okay, we have one more speaker in person and that is Carrie Coleman.
Hi, I'm Carrie Coleman, I'm in Whitpain Township. I actually just have one quick question to switch topics. I think the language that we use is very important and I would just like to know the answer of why you've chosen to use the word equity instead of equality in your discussions and in the names of your committees. And if you would answer that on the website, that would be great.
Thank you. And that wraps up the speakers for the second public comment period. So we're moving on now to board comment. Any comments from my fellow board members?
Joe, I had two questions.
Yes, Amy.
One, I just wanted to follow with Wade to see if we did any progress with Mr. Murray and the book side, I have to be resident.
Sure.
So I met with probably about twelve to fourteen book side residents along with two people from Amber Yards and the township manager from Lower Gwinnett and township manager, excuse me, the township engineer. And we had discussions trying to formulate a plan. And we had discussions trying to formulate a plan going forward. And I have a memo on my desk which was typed up, but not sent to the board yet.
And then one more question for you, Wade, about classes. Have we had people practice to get more bus drivers?
I think it depends on from when. We do have, I believe it's one additional CDL driver, but we have one drop. And we had potentially two additional CDL drivers that were making inquiry going forward. But I would say at this point, really no substantial progress.
Other comments?
Joe, I have a comment.
Yes.
Tonight, I understand is Tracy's last meeting on the board. And I just want to say that when I joined the board, Tracy was very helpful to me in navigating what it is to be a board member, how to become a good board member, and how to get through all the things we deal with. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve with her. I wish her well, and I thank her. And I think the school district should thank her for her service as a school board member.
I would round a applause for that.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to second that as well. It's been eight years since Tracy and I have been before the mask. And I'm sorry, I won't see her at the next meeting. But being on the board is the second most rewarding experience I've ever had in my professional life. And the one that's more rewarding, of course, was when I was teaching for 35 years. But being able to work with board members, those that have come and gone. And we've all had one thing in common, and that is the best interest of our students and our taxpayers and the community at large. And I know Tracy and I have worked hand in hand in these last eight years. And I will miss Tracy, and I will miss all of you. But you won't get rid of me quite as quickly because I'll be here next week anyway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, I have a comment and a question.
Yeah, Paul.
Would like to echo the comments regarding Tracy, and also want to wish you well as you move forward. We appreciate your service and all that you've done for the district. And then secondly, I do have a question regarding the school's policy for following up on some of the concerns that we heard tonight about materials within our schools, whether it be in the library, whether it be in the classroom. Is there a formal mechanism that we have now where concerns can be raised? And then maybe that could be explained a little bit for clarification for everyone?
Yeah, Jim, can you?
Yeah, I can. There is a policy as was stated, but on this instance, I'm going to recommend that we take out the one provision of the policy. There's a provision in the policy that makes a lot of sense. It says any book, not this one, that is under contest or is being questioned stays in circulation until the committee has a chance to review. I think, given the nature of this book, we're going to pull that last provision, have the committee review. I think the outcome will be pretty obvious. And meanwhile, it will not be in circulation while the committee is doing its work.
Thank you.
We appreciate everyone bringing these books to our attention, and we will do that. We need to have, we have the policy for a reason, and we'll follow it. And the policy actually has a quick turnaround time, five days. And we will meet that. In this instance, we're going to do it over the five days and just pull it immediately.
Thanks, Jim, for that clarification.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, I agree. Tracy's been great working with you. One other update that I don't know if we talked about, but I know was put into place was the mics. I don't know if we publicly gave that update, but I thought that was, did we share that?
Stephanie, are you referring to the mics for teachers?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, anyway, you didn't mention that in your report. Do you want to elaborate a little bit for the meeting here and the public?
Yes, thank you. And so we did make a purchase. We surveyed the teachers in all of the schools to see who was interested in the microphone.
Amplifiers?
Voice amplifiers, thank you. Oh, thank you, the voice amplifiers. And we did place the order. Amplifiers have come in and have been distributed to the teachers who have requested those. So yes, thank you. Thank you for that.
Great.
I have a comment. I'm glad Paula brought this up because I was going to bring it up too. And I'm glad Dr. Chrisfield is taking this stance with this book. And, you know, some of the parents were saying that there are other books of this nature. So if you want to send titles to those books to the administration to take a look at, because obviously, this should not be anywhere near our children. I totally agree with that. I did have a little speech that's not very long. But I started off going, in case you didn't know, this will be my last comment. Well, now you all know. I just wanted to start off by saying that it has been a pleasure to serve you. Things were very different when I first elected. We've had many struggles, just to name a few, would be COVID, COVID, the Peters crisis. Do we build a new high school? Do we not build a new high school? And COVID. But there are others, I'm sure, that I couldn't think of. But I'd like to concentrate on the positives. While I've been here at Wissahicken, I was able to witness or be part of many great, great things. One of the things that I know I was a part of was the Athletic Task Force that was established. And we identified many areas that could use some real freshening up in the district, like our logo, our uniforms, our fields. Hopefully, we'll keep going with that one. I've seen a new nautatorium in Central Park plant we built. In addition to the Stony Creek modification that we're doing right now and the modifications that we've done to all of our schools, really, some more than others. But we are one of the top districts in the state, while also having one of the lowest military rates in the county. We have many merit scholar students and students that have gone on to very prestigious universities. And I'm very proud to say that my son and daughter are Wissahicken alumni. And I hope that my children are proud of me and my service here. And then I did want to say that my hope in moving forward is that we can eventually get back to normalcy and say goodbye to COVID. I hope that each child in this district, each and every child in this district, receives an excellent education while having an awesome, awesome experience here. I found that even though these past eight years have been a huge time commitment, I don't know that people at home understand the time commitment that goes into being a board member, but it's a huge time commitment. It's the biggest time commitment I've had, other than, of course, you know, being my mom, being a mom. But it has been the most rewarding thing other than that that I have done in my life. My advice to the future boards is read everything, stay informed, ask questions, and speak your mind. No question is a stupid question. Always be polite and respectful. There will be tough times, but there will also be times that will make you very proud. My last thing was that I wanted to say that I am thankful that you elected me twice to be your voice. And I know that today and every day that I've been proud to take part of something to make a difference to each and every one of your children's lives. And I hope that I did a good job.
Any other comments? All right, student board reps, Carly and Alex, if you're still there. Any comments to round out the evening?
I don't have anything else to say.
I don't have anything either.
Okay. Well, Tracy, just as a final note, I want to thank you for your years of service on the board, also for your years of service as a vice president on the board, being a little bit of my partner, I won't say in crime, but my partner in this endeavor for the last several years. And you will be missed. You did a good job. You did a great job for everyone in Wissahicken and your kids, your family, and we all are proud of you. Thank you. All right, Whitback can have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.